I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. For those of you who stayed, Bob is unfortunately not able to join us tonight. He got called away at work. So, sorry to miss the last meeting, but I will try to do him justice and fill in. Anyway, to start, I guess I need a motion to, I guess, open the meeting first. I haven't done this in a while. A motion to open the meeting and accept the agenda. Still moved?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 4-0. And we recognize that we have some new people joining our ring 10, so it's kind of like Ms. Jewell said, you've got the beginning and the end coming at the same time. And we, as a result, we wanted to pull that section to the front of the agenda. So, we're going to move 9.2 to 9.5. Up right now. And do you want to say a few words?
I would. Certainly, as Mrs. Kerner indicated, certainly a night of celebrations. And just as we acknowledged the tenure of a number of our wonderful colleagues and celebrated the retirement of others, we have the great pleasure of celebrating new additions to our district tonight. First individual is not with us this evening, but Nicole Medina. Nicole has worked in our district over a course of four years in a variety of leave replacement capacities and will be joining us in a permanent tenure track position for 7th grade science. So, we certainly are excited to welcome Nicole into that new role. But we have some tremendous candidates that we're thrilled to be able to welcome to the Irvington School District tonight that will all be working at Dow's Lane. So, with that said, Randy, I would like to welcome you back again and allow you to introduce our new colleagues to the board.
Great. So, I just wanted to first start off and tell the community that a little bit about the search that we had that helped us find these tremendously talented candidates that are here tonight. We had over 1,200 applicants for this job. So, there are a lot of people who want to work in Irvington schools. And of those 12,000 plus, I mean 1,200, 12,000, that would really be something. Sorry. Of those 1,200 applicants, I think we found the three finest ones out of all of them. So, they went through a screening interview process with Dr. Core, Mrs. Benedetto, and me. They went through a committee interview that included classroom teachers, our instructional leaders, specialist teacher, school psychologist, literacy specialist, math coach, parent from the community. The committee made recommendations for candidates to move on to the next phase. Those candidates came in and did demo lessons in our classrooms with our students and had another debriefing interview with Dr. Core, Mrs. Benedetto, and me. Finalist candidates then also went on and had an interview with Dr. Harrison. And as I said, our final candidates are here tonight. And so, I'm going to start off. I'm also going to allow Meg to invite Meg up here to introduce one as well. So, the first person that I'd like to introduce you to tonight is Nicole Cristofaro. And we welcome Nicole to Dow's Lane as the newest member of our kindergarten team. Throughout the search process, from screening interview through her demo lesson, Nicole impressed us with her knowledge of the Common Core and her deep understanding of how children learn. She further impressed us in her demo lesson seamlessly incorporating technology into her lesson to help the content come alive for the students. She's thoughtful, insightful, and reflective, and is clearly a very dedicated educator who has been teaching for 10 years, the last six at the same school that we hired a teacher from last year. So, we welcome her, and we're excited to have her join the Dow's Lane community this fall and to share her love of learning with our staff and students. So, welcome Nicole. If you could stand.
So, I'll be recognizing Catherine Chapaud. When we met Catherine Chapaud during the hiring process, we were impressed by Catherine's skill and expertise. You might even say it was like hearing music play, or maybe it was her singing during her demo lesson. Delivering an artful reading workshop lesson, Catherine delivered every aspect of the workshop model and even brought herself to the lesson by singing the steps the children would follow during the guided practice. Throughout the lesson, she checked in with students, assessing and adjusting to meet their needs. And watching her teach the students, we were provided a window into who she is as a person. We look forward to seeing how she incorporates her many talents such as her fluent French and instrumental music knowledge into the classroom. We are pleased to be welcoming Catherine Chapaud to the staff of Dow's Lane. Please stand.
And our third candidate this evening is Deana Caravales. And throughout the interview process, Deana made a very positive impression on the whole search committee. In fact, positive is an apt adjective to describe Deana, as she exudes positive energy and inspires smiles. She impressed us with her knowledge of the Common Core, and as a literacy coach, she's very familiar with balanced literacy and the reading and writing workshop approach. She brings with her five years of successful classroom teaching as well as a year as a K-2 literacy coach. And we'd like to welcome Deana to Dow's Lane and look forward to having her share her smiles with our students and staff.
Welcome. We're very excited. I guess the next item on the agenda, we're going to jump.
Can we accept those?
Yeah. Motion, a resolution, a motion to approve 9.2 to 9.5.
Oh, yeah. We didn't do that. Yeah, sorry. Can I have a motion to approve 9.2 to 9.5?
Still moved?
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I motioned Phil second.
I'm out of practice, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 4-0. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the follow-up to the technology presentation. Got a full room.
We wanted you all to ourselves.
For the purposes of anyone who might be watching the meeting, Jesse, Levinsky, and Reina Core made a wonderful presentation at the last board meeting on June 3rd. However, it was very, very late, at the end of a very jam-packed board meeting. So, we kind of decided as a board that we would wait until the next meeting to ask, you know, the questions based on the presentation. Personally, I kind of feel like it's hard to come back into it because you're kind of in the midst of it when you make the presentation, but, you know, I think it was so late at the time, it seemed like the right thing to do. So, with that said, we'll try to kind of get our heads back into that presentation that you guys made, and I guess I'll turn it over to the board initially for questions for Jesse and Reina.
Jesse, want to give, pull up the chair next to Reina.
Do you want me to start?
Start.
Yeah. Reina, when you're ready. So, I think I talked to Jesse separately. Wanted to thank you for the excellent presentation that really was very informative and very well-done, I think, also. These may not be easily answerable questions, but I still want to sort of throw them out there. You know, and what it has to do with what the goals, how do we think about what the goals are? I mean, we've seen all these things that we have, starting at K and working our way up, and what are the goals? Do we have a clear sense of what the goals are for what we want kids to graduate? I mean, where do we want, what ultimately do we want? The set of knowledge, it's both knowledge and skills, I suppose, kids to graduate with.
Yeah. I mean, I guess the simplest answer, and I had, you know, been able to review some of your questions.
Your batteries.
Was, is, that I would say what we saw this year and what I think we were able to share with you in the presentation is that there is a lot of good work going on. What I think we're also very comfortable sharing at this point is, in the absence of having for many years a director and a shift, there was a time when we had a curriculum and a set of standards and benchmarks spiked by grade. That's now many, many years ago, and our work for next year is now to work together to put a technology committee back together, a technology team, who really will be doing that. Because as much as we have some, we've defined some very good work, I think we would agree with you that the absence of standards is a big hole in our process.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And so, it'll be interesting to hear how that goes, I guess. And I suppose it would be, you know, there might be a minimum, I'm just thinking out loud, there might be a minimum sort of, you know, idea of what you would want graduates to have, but there may well be a number of students who want to get more specialized, you know. Instruction might, you know, be particularly focused on the technology track or the computer track or whatever, who will want more. And, you know, it's probably helpful to think about that as well, I would think, right?
Just to maybe add on to that, which maybe speaks to what you're saying there, John, is two things. One is the standards create benchmarks. So, for us, they create the baseline, but they don't necessarily create the ceiling. And the ceiling is really created in multiple ways. So, for instance, for several years, we didn't have students interested in computer programming. Now, Dave's not here, but looking at the high school numbers, it looks like we'll be running two sections of Computer 1 and 2. So, some of it is trends, some of it is where our student interest is, and I know, I think Robin asked a question about courses and where that goes. But the next step really is for Jesse, along with Dave, our art, science, and art, science, and math department chairs, along with some of our teachers, to really come together early next year. Because one of the issues that we're having is around, for instance, Project Lead the Way and who's certified to teach in that program and what are the options. So, what we're really going to start to do very early next year is start to look at, what are those courses? What are the sequences? So, how do we meet the needs of that student who has, who wants to work at the higher levels? What do we offer that student? So, I think we're connected to both creating the benchmarks, but we're also connected in our thinking to creating the opportunities for our students at a higher level.
Can I interrupt one, just following up on your question? You said create benchmarks. You're talking about at the high school, because at the lower grades, aren't the standards already set with the Common Core for technology? Did I misunderstand that?
No, you understood it, but that is one very, very tiny nugget. That is just around keyboarding. So, the Common Core has established a benchmark for keyboarding skills. But we're talking more about, I had referred to the ISTI standards and the set of standards, New York State standards, that there are different sets of standards out there that is, and that would be where we would start to name and ensure that our students have a certain set of experiences over the course of X number of years.
And just to follow up, I remembered you mentioning a whole host of different standards, but those standards are not required by New York State, but there are various standards that you guys pick, which ones you prefer?
The New York State standards are for grades 6 through 8. The ISTI standards that we mentioned that were student standards, teacher standards, and administrator standards, they have strands that are basically extended through the whole sequence of K-12.
So, only the New York State standards are required?
Right.
Okay.
So, part of this process, I would think, would ought to be, you know, consideration of what, what kind of standards should the district embrace, right?
Exactly.
ISTI is the right thing? I looked on their website a little bit, and what I saw, it sounds like there's a lot more if they have grade by grade. I didn't see that. But, you know, it sounded very, very general, I guess, what I saw, and I don't know if that's the right thing or if we want to be more, I don't know, whether the right word is different or ambitious or whatever, I don't even know.
We had the level of specificity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, that's, I guess, something we'll, hopefully, you'll work on more next year, and we'll hear more about. That probably answers the next question I would have had, which was, how do we assess kids in these things? I imagine that's not well-worked out at this point, or maybe it is in certain areas, but, because it sounds like that would have to be kind of come part and parcel with the standard, developing the standards.
Yes. I would just highlight that I think that the complication for us in defining it, which we definitely need to do, is we're really assessing two different things, right? So, we're assessing the use of technology and the use of tools, let's say, in getting, in kids' learning, how, what do they know and what are they able to do using technology. But then, our true assessment needs to be, how do we measure the learning? So, if a teacher is integrating technology in the classroom, how do we know that the technology is improving the learning opportunities? And sometimes that's level of engagement. It's not so much achievement, but it's engagement that leads to achievement. So, those are very complicated things to measure, but we would certainly be naming what the expectations are so that we could define what a measure would look like.
What, pardon me, what do we do if the technology in the classroom is actually hurting the learning of certain populations? And how do we know that that's happening? It's almost the converse of.
Yeah. I don't know. I guess hurting for me is like, I'm trying to think, like, I guess effectiveness. So, is it going to have a different level of effectiveness? Well, I guess where I would go with that is what I would say about any instruction. We need to make sure that we are differentiating. So, there's a set standard. So, for instance, let's say we want, we agree that all students by 5th grade need to have used, know or proficient in Microsoft Word and Microsoft Publisher as tools. So, those are tool examples. So, that's not going to, you know, hurt necessarily, but a student, what we hope in middle school and high school, has the wherewithal to choose which tools make the most sense for them for their own productivity.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I would say I can imagine a scenario where these things could hurt. You know, I mean, I've seen it with my own kids at certain phases in their life. Technology can be enormously distracting for kids, you know.
I guess the specific example I was seeing was just the flipped classroom, that some kids might not take to it as well as other kids. So, you might have some kids that, like, this is what we've always wanted because now we can study on our, we can learn on our own at home, and then we can use the classroom for more interaction around particular problem solving or something, whereas some other students might have a distracting home environment or might find that difficult to do that.
I guess it's the same thing that we would say for anything. So, some students, the teacher gives the assignment, you know, read the next 20 pages, and some students go home and read those 20 pages, and some students are too distracted to read the 20 pages. So, for me, it always goes back to what's our measure of success in terms of the student's achievement and their ability to have learned what our goals are. So, for me, I would expect any teacher to be able to differentiate on both of those ways.
Right.
Because there's no one way. I think that's really what we know.
But what about the teachers whose, I mean, arguably, in technol, with these tools that are coming up, some teachers are going to be much more effective using them than others. And, I mean, I guess it's a question which is, how are we going to make the determination? Is it just going to be required across the board, or do different teachers have the ability to figure out what's the best way for them to deliver the instruction? I don't know, you know, how you tackle that problem.
I mean, ultimately, you know, our goal is to empower teachers to use technology in the classroom, not necessarily to, and to be able to choose the tools that are appropriate for the instructional strategies they're going to deliver. I guess what we're looking to do is basically provide professional development options that help them to do that. So, it's really not necessarily about saying, this is what your choice is. And I would actually, direct back to the presentation, talk about when we did discuss that flipped classroom cohort experience, teachers were free to choose whatever they, whatever technology they wanted to use to support that. We simply provide the support and learning.
Question about the flipped classrooms. What if a teacher was going to use this particular technique and a kid doesn't have internet access at home? Because I actually know of kids who don't. For, you know, they have a computer but no internet access because, for a variety of reasons. What happens then? Have we gotten, been in that position, out of curiosity?
We weren't in the position this year. So, with teachers that were part of that experience that never came up, and we actually did discuss that. But we have strategies we can use. I mean, we have technology available throughout our buildings that students can use during pre-periods, before school, after school. So, we do make those, access to those resources available. So, that was one thing that when the teachers, we had a discussion about it, was considered. Moving forward, as we start to talk about BYOD and technologies that we own, we could expand the conversation to potentially look at other solutions.
I want to get back to my question about, you know, Phil asked this, I think, but I wanted to see if I can understand the answer, or maybe there's more. Maybe I'm asking a somewhat broader question. So, how do we, how do we assess generally the success of the technology? We're doing all this technology, we have all these great initiatives on technology and more to come. How do we really know if they're working well or not well? And what would tell us they're not working well, for example? And what, I mean, what do you look for to evaluate? And I think, I think I heard engaging students better. I don't know if there's more to it than that, but.
No, I said that, that, that you're saying what my point was, which is, it is hard to measure, because sometimes you're measuring student engagement, which does lead to higher student achievement. But there's no, it's not easily to, it's not easy to create a direct correlation between those two things.
Yeah.
So, for me, the measure always ultimately has to get back to our instructional goals. What do we want students to know and be able to do? And for some teachers, as we continue to see now, there are some teachers who do not embrace technology and their students are very successful. There are some teachers who embrace every opportunity and are looking for new ways. By having a set of standards for what we want students to have as graduating seniors, it also puts the responsibility in our classrooms, that if we want our students to have this knowledge and skill, we need to commit to teaching it. So, when we're teaching it, we're going to be assessing for it. So, again, I'll use an example of Microsoft Publisher. Through that project, we have rubrics and criteria. We say, here's what we want students in 5th grade to be able to do using Microsoft Publisher. So, that's how we assess the use of Publisher. How we assess the learning is how we would assess any learning in terms of, can students demonstrate what we're asking them to demonstrate as a result of the teaching and learning?
Yeah, and I guess it's clear where, if, we have this bifurcation between technology in instruction and instruction in technology, right? And it's pretty clear how to evaluate instruction and technology, and can they do particular things like use Microsoft Publisher by the time they're in 5th grade? Or maybe some are precocious and do it in 4th grade, who knows? It's a lot harder, I think, when you're kind of investigating, when you want to have an initiative to use Chromebooks or something, and you don't really know, you know, how do we know whether that's having a positive effect or a negative effect, or is worth the effort and the money we're putting into it?
So, you're talking about the hardware, it sounds like?
Yeah, well, I'm talking about, well, not necessarily just, but I'm talking about using technology in instruction for whatever, not, you know, ELA or math or French or whatever. And how do we know whether that whole initiative?
So, just to follow up on John, so, for example, today I took a, my son has Mr. Byers for math, and he's given the parents some online, like, videos throughout the year, and he asked for very honest feedback on his videos, which I gave him. And in addition, he also told us to be on the lookout for a survey regarding the use of Chromebooks. And I thought about that today, and that's why I'm bringing this up in conjunction with John's asking. I was thinking about that. I'm like, what could they be asking me? Because it was always used in school. And I guess it's, from a parent's perspective, how do we know the use of technology? I mean, what I saw was enthusiasm over it. I knew when it was a red day, which meant he was not using that Chromebook in math. I saw a passion and an excitement for it. So, to me, I thought, you know, I love it. I mean, he's not a confident math kid, so he was so excited, and he didn't seem to be, you know, having troubles grasping the concepts. But I'm just trying to figure out, piggybacking on his question, how do we know that the use of technology helps them in their learning?
Or helps them, kind of, or helps them as much as some other initiative we might put forward, you know, is it the best thing we can do?
So, kind of to tie the two thoughts together, when we were putting together our survey for the Chromebook, and we put together surveys for both, the Chromebook initiative and clarified each in terms of what we were looking for in terms of the data points to get back. So, with the Chromebook, it wasn't just about the use of the Chromebook itself. Some of our questions directed at the students were about, did this affect your use of technology, not the Chromebook? But your use of technology for classware, not just in that class, but in your other classes as well. So, we were looking to get feedback, not just on the Chromebook itself, but on what the impact was in terms of your use of technology throughout your other classes. So, there were a lot of questions like that, where we want some quality and that quantity of feedback. Yes, the Chromebooks, and actually, the feedback we received in Phase 1 helped us to kind treat and revise some of the rules in Phase 2. That's obviously what we wanted to do as we moved forward, but also to get some thought to what it looks like, not just in that class, but in the other classes, where they have the Chromebooks.
Yeah, I mean, just because it's pertinent to this Chromebook thing, because my son happened to be in the same class as Maria's son, and I'm in a little bit different boat, which is, I have a student who's a little resistant to learning, and I had a huge problem with the Chromebooks, because as Maria said, it's a black hole. I couldn't access the homework, I couldn't check as to what was being done. I just, you know, it was, he was in control of what I was going to see. And I really, I, many emails with the teacher, like, where does that leave the parent who isn't really as involved at that point in what he was doing?
But it was all on Google Drive, you could see it.
It's on his Google Drive. I couldn't go on his Google Drive.
We could from home.
Not only if he let me on it.
Your son?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. You're making a big assumption here. So, I mean, it was just, but again, it's a different perspective, but I think there's an element of parental, especially for, maybe not in high school, but certainly in middle school, it's still, when parents are still involved and starting to back off, there, I feel like, you know, how, how can we better engage the parents? And that's based on my particular experience.
But that's why you like doing this survey. You know, in other words, what we don't know, we don't know yet, and each child is different. So, it's, so when you say, what information can you give, you just, right here, shared like two responses and experiences that will help inform the question. So, all we can do right now is store, I mean, this was the first year, so, and the end of the year, so we're asking those questions so that we can. I mean, we got some pretty interesting information and responses. I mean, one of the questions, I'll just share, is one of the survey questions asked about whether the high school kids, the kids who had been with them 24/7, did they use the Chromebook at home? And it was interesting, they said they used their own technology. So, that's really interesting and informative for us. So, when we went to the middle school model, where we left them in school and kids weren't taking them home, based on what we learned, and again, that was this much data, so we're not saying, okay, so now let's do this. But, so, what we found is that maybe our kids, really for the most part, they don't all need them 24/7, because they use it in class, collaborating and working together, but once home, most kids appear to be using their own technology. So, it doesn't mean that we wouldn't have resources for a child who might not have it, but that was really interesting data for us.
Right, but again, now, I mean, it is an interesting data, but there's a lot of ways to interpret that. I mean, there could be a lot of causes. It might be because it was only in one class, and if it was pervasive in a class, but I'm saying for all the kids, right? Then at some point, though, if they started in 6th grade and they use it in more classes, they might end up adopting, I mean, you don't know. It's how do you interpret the data?
I guess my point, I guess I wasn't looking for us to interpret the data here, you're right.
Yeah, no, no.
I guess, I thought you were asking, how do we know? So, I was just giving some examples of how do we know? Well, we start to collect data, and then we start to figure it out. And we also start to make sure that we're not just isolating that data as, that's what's true now, because it's, no. Well, how do we triangulate our data? How else do we really know what is? One way is through parent feedback at the middle school. So, I mean, I think we've been very committed, we've talked a lot about making sure we have baselines and collecting information.
And have you done also surveys of the students from the middle school who've used it?
Yes, we actually just, yeah, and one of the next questions about this process is we didn't be able to be agile, agile, kind of, before, I don't know, and say, okay, well, based on what we need that, or receive what official questions should be asked as you move to the next phases. So, we met as a team, revised the exit charter for the middle schools to account for some of the things we wanted to accomplish, and we have some information for this. So, that we can do that.
And it was a different model, so different kind of question.
Right, right.
So, will there be, like, formal, will there be assessments that, like, the board could actually see? Because we talked in the beginning of the year about, like, the flipped classroom, I'm just thinking the Google Chromebook, some of these pilots that we're doing. And I guess, it sounds like we're all kind of curious about, how do you assess? So, it seems like, I see there's a lot of summer work in some of these technology areas too. It seems like it would make sense to do the assessment, and then that would affect some of the work that we're going to have them do in the future. So, I guess the question for me is when, or if we as a board will be able to see some of the, kind of, your take on what happened and your of the, kind of, your take on what happened and your assessment, and as a result, you know, your decisions moving forward. I think that's, not only are you doing it, but also, you know, can it be shared so that us and ultimately the community will feel more comfortable? And again, it's not that people might not always agree, but it's helpful to see what's affecting the thinking moving forward in this area.
We hijacked your questions.
That's fine. I'm glad to hear they're of general interest. I just happened to get to them first. What's, maybe when we jump to my questions on flip learning, because I think it's closest to what we're already talking about. Flip learning, flip classrooms, I don't know if the right, which is the right term, but I think we talked about assessment generally. What's the plan? Where, what is the plan? Because this is, for whatever reason, it's a little bit of a hot-button issue with some people. And I don't have any, I tend to not have strong views about hot-button issues, but what's the plan going forward about what, you know, we, maybe, it's been tried by a few teachers? Five or six?
So I mean, I guess Eli Byers was not part of the cohort, and Eli Byers was using some methodologies related. Susan Wallace is at Main Street School.
That was more geared towards parents. He was keeping the parents in, with his videos. It wasn't meant for the kids.
Oh, because I saw some of his videos.
And Susan Wallace was doing, yeah?
And Susan Wallace in HPT.
She was always a whiz with smart boards, I assume.
Yeah. So I guess what I would say, and, you know, it may be valuable for us to move forward and really do something a little more adept on the work. You know, flip learning is not a technology initiative.
Understood.
And I guess I have questions about how, I understand how it's gotten now folded into a lot of our conversations. I would say both the middle school and high school, we got very little. So I know there were some people who have questions about it, and we want to make, and help people to know it and understand it. But it's a strategy, and so in the same way, you know, Phil started out, it's no different than the teacher saying, read these 20 pages tonight.
Yeah.
So it's a strategy. And so, again, how do we measure the success of our strategies? Through learning, through achievement. And we find that our students that were using methodology like that, if Dave White didn't realize it, that, you know, wait a minute, I got to the end of this unit, or not even the end, because nobody would wait till the end, I'm in the middle of this unit, I would expect for kids to know and understand this, and they're not getting it? Is it because, am I using, is it the videos? Is it flip learning? Is it I'm using too many? Or, you know, the feedback from our students was mostly positive, but we shared with you some examples of some students who still prefer a traditional model. So it's a strategy, it's a technique. We measure it by measuring the success of our students.
Is it, and that makes perfect sense. Is, but moving forward, are, is it basically up to the teacher whether they want to use this strategy or tool? Or is the plan that it's got to be in eight classrooms or something? Or it could be, I mean, they could all decide they love it and they all want to do it, or they could all decide they don't want to do it?
Here's the one thing that I have on my radar, and I know we've talked about, is should there be a student who somehow manages that? Let's say in four of my classes now, this is what the teacher is asking. Like, we want to be careful. In other words, any strategy, it's like when your children have a, you know, three tests the next day, and a parent says, how did that happen? That my child has a three test only one day? Those are the kinds of things we try to monitor. So I think we've talked about that, just making sure that if there are teachers who are using the strategy, and how does that balance out? So if you have a student who, it is not really a strategy that works for them, how do we make sure that we're not putting a student in a position where we're giving them, we're providing them with a learning experience that really isn't working?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So we are clearly aware.
Right, I mean, I, you know, again, I defer to professionals' judgment, but I don't really get, you know, I mean, back in the day, we had books and we went home and read the textbook, and then we came in and we discussed things during the day. I mean, what's, what's so different about, you know, having somebody record a lecture where they're essentially providing the same information? And why, why do we need that if we can, you know, especially because we're all so intent on literacy? Why, why do we need all this? It's not at all clear to me that it's, it all gives us anything we didn't already have, unless you think people are struggling with the reading. But that should tell us something about the work that needs to be done with that, those struggles.
I think in short, based on feedback with the students and teachers, one of the reasons this strategy appeals directly to them is it gives them more time for them to be able to choose to enjoy a class. So as opposed to having to teach a traditional style, like what we use to prepare.
Yeah, yeah, I've heard that, but I just don't understand it. Suppose you want to, you deliver a lecture, but you could also, that could be, that content could be written, and probably already is in many cases, and the student should be, could be told to go read chapter two, and, tonight, or, you know, and then come back. And why do you need a recording of it?
I just want to be sure that everyone understands, because people are home too. It is not one way. In other words, it does not take away from the student being expected to read chapter two. So what we want to have is, we want to have mixed strategies, because what about that student who's struggling reading chapter two at home? So we want to make sure that we're providing the opportunity. So one of the advantages would be, and I think you've heard us talk about through Common Core, this methodology of close reading. Well, if we're giving our students, even at the higher level, higher level complex texts in content area, as well as, I'm not just talking about English question, there's value to students actually reading parts of that text for a few minutes in class, with the teacher there, with their peers there, talking about the text. Lots of times, and we see it at high school all the time, kids are home reading by themselves. They don't necessarily understand it. If you have a student who really has those strategies down, they're using them, right? They're jotting it down, they're jotting questions, they're highlighting well. They know what they're highlighting, they know why they're highlighting. But not all students are able to work at that level independently. And so this gives that other way. It's not the only way, but it's another way.
Yeah, what concerns me a little bit is I think they'll mostly be getting to colleges where they'll be expected to do a lot of reading. And they won't be asked to do reading ever in classrooms. We want to, so anyway, it's, I guess, it's good to be able to raise these issues. What's the, what is the plan on BYOD device? Are we moving toward something happening on Bring Your Own Device?
So based on the presentation, what we talked about for the technology piece was to bring the campus up to a saturation model, so the campus would be BYOD.
That's the Wi-Fi.
Right.
So Wi-Fi, correct, in saturation models, to be able to implement BYOD on campus. And then we would budget 40,000 HTRs to be able to apply that saturation power here.
Okay, so that's, that's the, in terms of infrastructure, that, but in terms of what the school would use, would have kids do with the bring, the devices when they bring them, and what sort of devices would they be? And what, when would they be used? And I guess that, interesting to hear a little bit about that. I mean, I get the infrastructure part, and it obviously seems important.
Well, the policy, I don't know, the policy.
Yeah, so we have been working on revising the policies, and we wanted to get through the policies today. So this week, they've been through a policy committee, made some revisions to existing policies that would allow for this type of access in the schools. So those, samples of those policies, the revisions, will be coming to the board this week.
Okay, but I guess I'm also, just after what's the instruction, what, in terms of instruction, how are devices that students bring to be used? Is it, where we now use tablets and Chromebooks, but in a broader way? Or are there other plans for, I mean, everybody brings their, a lot of kids, you bring their smartphones already, but they're not?
Which ultimately, I think, is part of the goal, right? So we're not necessarily saying that we're limiting ourselves to tablets and Chromebooks. I think, why I was referring to the policy was essentially saying that that really provides a foundation for what we can do. Essentially, now, Albany and Utes classroom teachers are saying, now, we have the ability to have students bringing their own devices, partly education, professional development, opportunities for you to provide you to address how they incorporate some of the opportunities you're going to be in the classroom, and how you develop the instructional, the instructional element.
But will the school then say?
Can I give a good example of this, for example?
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
So this year, we don't have this policy in place, just using a personal example here. I think because of the use of Chromebooks in math, my son got it into his head that he wanted to use his iPad to take notes, to do his labs in class instead of writing everything. He went to Ms. Chapnick to ask for permission, we went through this whole, so he uses his iPad, for example, in science, to type up his lab reports. They don't have Wi-Fi there, so he can't hand it in like the rest of the class does. So he comes home, and Mr. Levine gives him permission, he emails it to him when he gets home from school. So it's, the way I look at it, being on the policy committee, and we've been talking about this, it's giving the kids a ability to use an iPad to take notes if a teacher is lecturing, a Chromebook to, you know, you could use other devices if you don't want to sit there, because a lot of kids are very good at the keyboard, and maybe not so quick at the penmanship and taking the notes. So it's just another way to help learn. And it could look differently for different students.
And let me just add, it's not only about having to use three devices, these classrooms should be able to take notes for their own purposes, it's really about designing a structure on how we can leverage power with devices. So I'm just, a really simple example would be, I know definitely two years ago, we had the Centio, like, register response system, where we would, the teacher would put on the board, one, two, three, four, and all sorts of kid flicker, and we would record data. Now we have a lot of easy, there are apps available, free apps that are available to do the same thing, which students would have their own app, essentially, basically either a button-back channel, a flash board, it's going to be like, create and do some data on a lesson, find out instantly whether or not that lesson worked.
So an example, let me just give, add to that example. So it was, and it was actually denied in Grant, and it was like in a box. And every time somebody wanted to use the student response system. So teacher puts a problem up on the board, and students can instantly at their own desks respond to that question on the board. Teacher instantly has the data. Twenty kids got it, four kids didn't get it. But to do that, the teachers would have to take this, they'd have to set it up, they'd have to create all this, Christine Rosner would be programming it for them, and it was such a scene that, well, the teachers loved it, and they loved the instant access to the data. It was too hard to organize and set up, and then somebody else wanted it, you know, in 20 minutes. And so by using...
So it was one set, so essentially, that meant it was only available to one person at one time. The BYOD, that option was available, and any teacher anchored.
Do, do we have total comfort about, I mean, maybe this is because my kids are somewhat older and went to, did elementary school before smartphones were around and even middle school. Do we have total comfort that we'd want elementary school kids bringing smartphones to school and using them? And it's just, it doesn't seem obvious as a parent to me, it doesn't seem obvious, and...
I guess you're just using that as an example. I mean, I think we'll talk about what's appropriate in terms of what, you know, as a Main Street School principal, I would say, no.
Yeah, and I would, I would, yeah.
But I guess, but I think we're just trying to give examples of how BYOD can be used. And it's a changing world. I see it now, even at Main Street, when I'm there. Lots of kids have phones down in, you know, in fourth and fifth grade, so.
Yeah, I don't think that's the same, we're saying that what teachers should expect and all that.
Right, I mean, there may well be, we may well have parents who don't feel they want, you know, there may be certain kids can't handle that for whatever reason, or families don't want.
So I guess if I didn't use Main Street as an example, middle school, you would have the same opportunity.
Okay.
So that, does that mean we are going to establish a threshold? Meaning that if you're in elementary school, you're not going to participate in BYOD? How are we going to make that decision?
No, I was just going to say, I just don't think that we're there yet. I think that we need to have those conversations. For next year, there is not going to be Wi-Fi at Main Street School or Downs Lane. So we have a year to really get ourselves set and organized at the campus, which is where we see the most application right out of the gate.
Yeah.
Right.
One other point I want to say, just as we made the distinction before between the infrastructure versus BYOD as like instructional strategy, is the plan to implement wireless at the elementary buildings is not solely for BYOD. We also are anticipating that it's going to require us to be able to test students via wireless devices at the elementary buildings, which is why we have to build a new plan to make sure that those buildings are wireless. Obviously, once the infrastructure is at that pace, you want to be able to save energy in every possible to help student achievement, which is why we view BYOD as a part of the plan. But I guess the plan to be looking at, looking at the campus versus how we look at the elementary schools is a little different.
Yeah, and I just think we have to be, you know, somewhat cautious about, you know, the overall role of technology in children's lives, and what's appropriate for different ages. And a lot of people have their own views about that issue, a lot of parents probably have their own views about that issue. It's going, there's going to be a lot of diversity about that, but I think we need to be sensitive and maybe try to understand, if there is a right answer, try to understand what that might be. I don't know what it is, but, yeah. My only last question was, I think I had asked a question, if we could see sort of some sense of the enrollment in the high school classes that are technology, kind of, how much are those, the different classes being used, or?
How much are the, I'm sorry, John, say that.
The different, the different high school technology classes?
Yeah.
How many students take them?
So actually, we can email this to you, just so you can be looking at it, but, you know, just to give you an idea, and I think we just talked about computer programming, one and two, this year, programming one had 18, and two had 16, and we're probably a double that going into next year. Years before that, we didn't run it. I would say our intro to engineering course, interestingly, I'll just do the last four, 15 kids, 11 kids, 27 and 25.
So last four years.
Yeah, so 27, 25 this year, 27 last year. So we're clearly seeing an interest, an increased interest in our courses. Architectural modeling, which you saw some examples of, four, five, eight, and now 10. So I would say pretty much across the board, we're seeing an increase. We also see it through the digital photography examples. So when we talk about technology, you know, we didn't get a chance to talk about the different examples last time, and I'm not sure that everybody, when they think of technology, I don't know that people were thinking of our photography class, but that the reality is our kids use a lot of technology in, you know, in the photography class. This year, we had 53 students enrolled in that, last year, 27, the year before that, 21.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, again, we're seeing definitely an increased interest in architectural design, 0, 1, 13, and this year, 17.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, those are, it sounds like the architecture and the photography are, you know.
Well, with the engineering, particularly here.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I guess I would, in my mind, separate engineering and computers. Programming on one, those are really our technology STEM courses in a way, right? With, from things that are outer architecture, where you're making intensive uses of technology, which are the other two.
Right. But the other thing to keep in mind is, I mean, I think this is true, the programming class is kind of, if you build it, they will come. I mean, this is based on what we had. I mean, I think if we start committing resources and, and kind of, you know, people are excited about it, I think those numbers are only going to go up.
And where it gets back, the kids are having a good experience.
I mean, for a while, they didn't come. I just want to be, you know, we hadn't come, water kids, and then we did, we ran, we offered it, and we really didn't have students, and then we offered it, and we do have students.
I mean, you know, I was told by people who work for the district, oh, nobody takes it, it's not a good class. So just, I'm just saying, and that was a year ago. So, I mean, you know.
Clearly have numbers this year.
Hopefully, no, but I'm saying, hopefully, people will see what's going on, and that will, that alone will probably change the spectrum as well.
And I just want to remind everyone, though, that we don't have a lot of staffing to teach this, and so that for us next year is a, is a very important process for us to be looking at. Who can? Who do we have that's capable? What, you know, budget season comes fast. But if we have this sort of higher level of interest across the board, that we're seeing, we have kids who are interested in engaging in not just programming, but other courses where technology is part and parcel of the instruction. And we want to make sure we're providing, you know, those opportunities for students. Dave Coles not here, but again, he talked a lot in the last couple of weeks, he talked a lot about having those sequences, not just about having an individual course. While that's very good, ultimately, we want to make sure we're providing sequences. while that's very good, ultimately, we want to make sure we're providing sequences, especially in the high school.
I, I mean, I, obviously, I'll speak for myself, but, I mean, in terms of budgeting, especially this year, we were fortunate that we, we did have some funds to allocate to additional things, and, um, you know, in terms of technology, I think it is a priority for a lot of people in the community, and it's a priority for a lot of people, period, and in terms of finding the funds to allocate to the staffing, you know, I, I think I would be optimistic that as long as there's a plan to support it, and there's a rationale, and hopefully even a longer-term plan, in terms of, not only what do you need next year for the budget, but like, you know, how, how do you envision building it, and, and how do you budget, you know, how could we kind of plan that out as we're budgeting next year?
And that's the sequence.
I think you'll find, right, but you'll find that there will be support, I think, in the community and hopefully the board member.
But I guess I just want to put in a layer to this that we haven't, that we will ultimately have to be talking about as we go through. The other concern or issue is how many electives are in high school with X number of students can afford. So, we not only need to be thinking about what we can do in our own school, we need to be thinking more broadly, because there are nine periods in a day, ten if your child doesn't eat lunch. You know, we, we need to be thinking, there's just so many things, and when you have students who are now going into other courses, that then diminishes enrollment in other courses. So, it's not only that lens, we want to make sure those opportunities are there, but there are, there's a domino effect, when you start to funnel too much in one direction versus another, so, I guess I just lay that out there for you, because I think that that's a really important, um, area of focus as we build our programs and sequences.
That's right. I, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Phil?
I've kind of asked my few questions.
Um, yeah, I just had two questions from last week's, two weeks ago, meeting. The seventh grade, I think it was seventh grade technology example, was that the building, that was the building, the bridge?
Yes.
Right, and then the eighth grade was robotics. Prior to that, if I remember, like, fifth and sixth, sixth grade, the examples you gave were around learning PowerPoint, maybe, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, right, so, and then when they get into high school, then they have the, the, yeah, and they have the optional courses. The, my question really is, if you were doing it all over again, and this is sequencing, I guess, if you're doing it all over again, would you have that sort of progression from, you know, learning sort of PowerPoint in fifth grade, or whenever that was, digital citizenship, into, um, engineering, into robotics, and then kind of into computer? It seems to me as a layperson that it's a little disjointed, even though each one of those things on their own was interesting, and it just didn't seem like it flowed naturally, and again, perhaps that's the sequencing, and I understand that robotics, robotics was from IEF, and possibly the, uh, bridge building was also from IEF, so, in a way, we're responding to the funding as opposed to thinking, you're shaking your head, oh, because they were, that's right.
Examples of projects, and we weren't saying this was the whole sequence, and also, in sixth, in sixth grade, driven by, it's driven by the state standards.
Right.
So, we have a little less flexibility, and I don't see flexibility, because we really do have the flexibility to teach the standards, however, we best see it delivered.
So, we're required in, in seventh, in, which was the, uh, bridge building, that was seventh grade, so, we're required in seventh grade to offer some sort of engineering?
So, I, we had shared that standard with you, yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing I would say, it's, it's interesting, but I'm going to think more about what you're saying, Phil, um, one of the things that I was thinking, actually, as we were putting together the PowerPoint, was the nice sequence of the programming in sixth grade, and then they do the programming again in eighth grade, for the robotics, you know, that's programmed, they create that program on a computer that runs what they create, so, I don't know, I-
Maybe it was the bridge building one that sort of seemed, and, and again, it was interesting in and of itself, and maybe that's the nature of education, that, you know, that if you're interesting kids in, in sort of thinking conceptually that way, and using tools to then, to achieve a tangible objective, then that's a good thing. That's why I was just asking the question, and it-
And I feel like the bridge support will allow-
It's interesting, because I think when some people see those technology standards, they're actually actions, which, we all tend to think of computers, but we view it as an opportunity to, you know, give bridge to critical with some of those standards, with things like, while it's different, it definitely addresses the standards and sequences.
Right, so, I guess the answer to my question is, as educators, it does not seem sort of out of sync. No?
Not initially, but as I said, like, I'll think a little bit more, also, yeah, we only share with you one project that they do, so I think it needs to look more broadly, and I would hazard a guess that over next year, when we're looking and we're naming the standards and we're talking, I'm sure that we're going to ship some things, you know, based on what we, when we look at the sequence, so.
Okay. My second question relates to the, the money, the budget for next year, it was sort of motivated by the end of Jesse's presentation, in which you kind of went through sort of the technical requirements, the hardware, and, um, I think it was just the hardware, yeah. Do we, is this, I guess my question was, is this in the budget for next year? Are there things that we need that we did not sort of include in the budget to sort of do what's necessary in the hardware side, or in, um, in building out any of our Wi-Fi needs, which is part of hardware, obviously?
Right. I mean, there was thought, there was thought to consider, should we, to how to break up that, that sequence in terms of the Wi-Fi, of whether or not to go all the way through the year, but it's something we can technically, the two sequences to a plan, mostly because, and it ties directly to the version of the traditional hardware, we had to give some consideration to what exact hardware needs we have, as far as, we're starting on traditional devices, we're starting on traditional devices, and we're going to take a look at what we have first, and make sure that we're comfortable with our current, you know, configuration, so we've been living now for a few years in this K, with this K standard, having the teaching machine, plus efficient machine, and several virtualized machines to go with that. Before we make long-term decisions on purchasing, we want to make sure that that's allowed, that we're comfortable with it, but now we have some flexibility that bringing Wi-Fi capabilities will last, so, I think for next year, we're, we're okay. I think it's hopefully besides, moving forward as we get this technology ready together, and get more feedback from maybe through the May 10, to help drive some of our thinking about technology.
Well, I guess the reality is that in delaying some of the expenditure, gives you time to consider the full ramification of BYOD, and as we were saying, do we want to actually have technology in our elementary school? Do we want to have BYOD in our elementary schools? Thanks, that's all I had, and I didn't say, but great job with the comprehensive nature of it. I was a little worried about sixty-six slides, but ended up being very interesting and illuminating as to all the different programs that we're offering.
I, I had a few more questions, um, I mean, kind of what you said, but when you talk about technology, it often includes a lot of different things, like, teacher development, you know, classroom, and there's so many pieces that it encompasses, and, and, um, and I guess, the concern I have about all of it, all, all pieces of it, it's kind of an overriding concern, it's just kind of the same issue that a lot of people had with Trailblazers, which is, I'm, I don't really see that there's mastery at any piece of this, and it seems like, it almost seems like, well, we'll just, we'll just kind of move forward and spiral back, maybe, and, and that, that concerns me, and, I mean, the one example I'll give, which is very basic, I mean, when we talk about technology, we're talking this, we implemented this years and years ago, as you guys know, but, I, I mean, look at Edline, I mean, you know, a kid, an eighth grader was chatting with me the other day, and complaining that, you know, the homework's not up there, and the teacher says it's going to be up, I mean, basically, same thing, I mean, that is technology, so, how do we achieve mastery? I mean, i- if we can't get all our teachers, in my mind, to, to use Edline, and, you know, some of them use the calendar, some of them put it in the assignments, some of them don't put tests upside, I mean, it's, it's all over the map, and the kids are struggling, I mean, this is, this, you know, a neighbor's kid was just talking to me, really, and just said, oh, this is so frustrating, um, I, I worry about, that we're going off in so many directions in technology, and that we're trying to push forward and push forward, because everybody's pushing forward, but are we, are we losing sight of, of doing each piece well? I mean, how do we balance that? I don't, I don't see mastery in, when, in technology right now.
I guess I don't know how we could expect to see mastery, so, I guess I look back at the last seven years, and I say, where did we define benchmarks? Where did we define expectations? So, for me, I'm not sure when you say mastery, I guess I need some understanding of mastery of what, when you talk about mastery of teachers using technology as a tool, which is what Edline is, versus mastery of integrating technology as part of teaching and learning?
Yes, I mean, it seems like, but, I mean, in terms of Edline, this is, this has been an issue for years, I mean, so, to me, if we're spending all this time and energy, and we've committed district resources to moving forward in technology, it seems like we should be able to get all the teachers on the same page, in terms of a very basic technology thing, and I, I mean, and yes, and it's-
That's not a basic technology thing, that's, I guess, for me, it goes back to, um, I mean, first of all, there's been no expectation that K-five teachers are using it.
Okay, the six-twelve, I mean, I agree with you.
Right, so, six-twelve, there's an expectation, and that's, that's a communication tool, so for me, to address the use or the lack of use of Edline, I think is an infrastructure and, um, a building level expectation, I don't think it has anything to do with technology necessarily, so.
I, I do, I mean, I, I view it as, the teachers view it as technology, like, some of them are like, oh, I don't use that, I don't use that technology to communicate, and it's not a discussion to have tonight, it's just a concern about, my concern about mastery, and a lot of the things you're talking about as well, like, if a teacher is going to start putting all these, um, tools in their, in their, um, you know, teaching, or whatever you, shed, tool shed, whatever you want to call it, then it seems like, you know, how do we, how, how do we make sure that at some point, they're going to be good at what they're doing, and, you know, they're not, I mean, sometimes technology is so exciting, but if not used in a right way, then, I, I just don't know how, how we check it, it gets back to the assessment a little, and how, how we work toward mastery.
And I think, I think there's, there's two different questions and points on the table, I think, one, Rain has spoke to earlier, in that our work next year is to define what those standards are, and to define what those experiences will look like for our children, and that will maybe change sequencing, it'll maybe introduce new things, excuse me, and since they will become our standards, there'll be expectations that teachers are going to have the tools, they're going to have the training to be equipped to be able to deliver that, that, that level of instruction, or to train students in those experiences, but then we're going to be monitoring and evaluating student progress, and of course, through that process, assessing our teachers' capability of being able to deliver and meet those standards. On the other side of it, I agree, there's pieces that we have to clarify, and we've talked a lot about, you know, setting expectations and setting standards, so when we're talking about on the instructional side, establishing standards for what's going to happen in the classroom, Jesse and I have been working the last couple of weeks on establishing what our, um, expectations and standards were going to be moving forward with things like Edline. Jesse's been pooling resources from different school districts to look at what posting protocols are for the use of Edline as a general communication tool, from the school district, from individual schools to the parents, and then also looking at it from a teacher's standpoint, of what can we do to, to make more uniform use, establish expectations, and whether that's initially six-twelve, whether we look at that differently on the elementary level, on the male, elementary level, we have a lot of teachers that have grade level pages as opposed to individual pages. So, what are our expectations, establishing what the norm is, setting the standards there, and communicating it, and articulating it, and making sure that we're able to enforce and assess that it's being completed. So, that's work that's already underway, I think I have three emails of Google Docs in my inbox from Jesse over the last couple of weeks, of things that he's putting together for that purpose.
Um, it, it just seems like, I don't know, I just worry that we're going off in so many directions, that it's going to be hard to maintain equality across the board, and that's the concern, so.
I'm not sure what all those directions are, I guess I feel that way, I think we're very focused, we're very clear. Our direction is that we're going to move to establish the standards, the benchmarks, and the expectations around what we want students, what we want teachers to do, and what we want students to, you know, be able to do as a graduating senior. So, for me, it doesn't feel like we're off in a lot of directions, so I'm happy if you could, like, if you could give me some examples, I, it would be helpful to me, but, no, no, it doesn't feel that way to us, I think we're feeling, we're pretty focused, and we're clear, that now we need to build out.
Well, let me get, I'll give you one example, which is my next question, actually, which is, you talked about the Common Core learning standards for, I guess, technology in, in, you know, K to five, and in four, you talk about keyboarding, and there's a, you know, there's a standard, and, so, where, where, I guess it gets back to assessment, then, I, I don't, I don't think our kids are really meeting the standards right now.
We have one technology teacher who is shared between two schools, so, right now, Gwen Carney is responsible for teaching, what's our total number, seven, seven hundred and something students, so I guess that's an example of, and-
Yeah, but we also talked about how the technology's moving from, it's in the K, in the lower grades, you said it's much more delivered in the classroom, it's not necessarily delivered in a special.
No, it's not a special, but Gwen teaches it with the teacher.
Right, all right, well, again, it's just that, that, that's my example of, you know, I feel like our kids aren't meeting the standards, but I haven't heard anything about how we're going to get, move ourselves forward to meet the standards, I've heard a lot about everything we're doing, but it gets back to that assessment piece, when we're not, when, when the assessment comes back that, you know, we need improvement, you know, where is that built into all this? And how do we do that?
The formation of technology to the, to the specific purpose of performing that.
Okay, so, do you, when do you anticipate things will be put into place to work on that, I mean, in the fall, is that the work they're going to do?
I guess there's no staffing to teach keyboarding, so we're trying to do this actually as best as we can, and our teachers in third, fourth, and fifth grade are trying to do this as best as they can this year, um, so, we need to figure out how we're actually going to deliver the instruction around keyboarding. One point this year was that every time the teachers take the kids to the computer lab, they start with a keyboarding drill of some kind, but they're not technology teachers or classroom teachers, where their expertise is in literacy and mathematics, but, you know, knowing how to teach keyboarding, I, it may not seem like there's a lot to know for them, but there actually is, and you need to know the program well, and so, I, you know, again, I would just say, we can't, this, last year, we didn't have a technology teacher, so it just seems like there's an expectation that we are much further along when our infrastructure has really been here, so we're trying to build that infrastructure and save what we need to get there, and that's where we all-
But that should, but maybe then that should be part, I mean, honestly, it's, I kind of was taking that from your presentation, where you said, well, this is what the learn, Common Core learning standards are, so I maybe made an assumption that we're, we're meeting them, and if we're not, then that would be part of a, of, part of, I think, when we keep coming back and saying a plan, that would be part of a plan, is, you know, what is it going to take to meet the Common Core learning standards, and how long is that going to take, and what needs is it going to need, so.
We identified it so that you could see the, the broad nature of where technology expectations, that it was even in the Common Core, so we highlighted it for you so that you understood that it was one of the standards, not, we are definitely not meeting-
I missed, I misunderstood that, then, I just kind of thought we, if it was here, and it was part of it, we were integrating onto the Common Core learning standards.
And then I want to say that we're, I think we're being very structured and, and planning to be very disciplined, in how we're looking to provide opportunities here, and to develop those standards, it's not like one of those situations that, you know, we're rolling in a, a wheelbarrow full of tools and expectations, and say, all right, here's all these things, go at it, get it done, no, it's going to have to take time, there's going to have to be a lot of thinking behind what those expectations are going to be, what those tools and learning experiences are going to be, and then, as we said, how are we going to monitor its effectiveness? Can we kid lens it from a, a standard standpoint, to ensure that we're meeting those objectives?
May I ask a follow-up question, Robin? So, you've mentioned, we've all mentioned several times the importance of a plan to establish the standards, which I think was John's first question. When, what's a reasonable timeframe to expect this plan, especially in light of the fact that you need this plan to drive budgetary discussions, you know, well before we kind of get into our typical technology presentation, which doesn't happen until February, so we would really need to have the plan sort of lined up and done by, you know, November at the latest, I would say. Is that a reasonable expectation?
Well, we, we, we've done a lot of work to this point, and I'm actually later going to give you a framework for a plan, um, that we've actually been taking our thinking, evaluating what our needs are right now, and creating a framework for the work that we have to do. We've looked at numerous plans from other districts, and have actually kind of adapted, in talking to those districts, adapted work that they've done that fits what our needs and our thinking are, um, so we've outlined what those steps start, so those initial steps look like. So, we've outlined what those steps start, what those initial steps look like. And, and it's big picture. There's eight areas of focus that we were acknowledging at this point in time. So, there is going to be work that we're going to have to have underway as we head into November when we start budgets here in the season. But it's, it's going to be an ongoing process. It's not going to be something that we're going to resolve within one year's time. But very clearly, we have a method to, to our, our work at this point.
I guess, Chris, we could kind of debate the idea of a plan as a living document, which most plans are, but don't we need to have a clear understanding that is based on a plan for our budgetary, for, for proper budgeting for the following year? And it would be good to have it made clear as soon as possible that, in fact, we need more technology people at lower grades in order to, to, it's almost like you can start with the Common Core learning, the dreaded Common Core learning standards and say, "Well, how are we going to meet these basic standards?" Because we just identified that, in fact, with keyboarding, we're not achieving the standard. And that's just achieving these basic standards. It's not even excelling and achieving something beyond that. It seems to me that we have to have some kind of document created within a reasonable amount of time, and I guess November seemed reasonable to me as a, as a board member.
And I think that's the path that we're on.
Okay.
Very clearly. I don't think, I don't want you to think that we're, my response was being non-committal.
Sounded a little non-committal.
Well, but, as I said, we, I'm going to hand you a document tonight that is going to, that is going to outline that work that we're going to undertake next year, and it's going to show initial steps in areas, there's areas, we've already mapped out objectives that we know we have to achieve within the next two years. So, it's now sitting down with this broader group of people, greater expertise, a focus group, not a think tank that's going to meet periodically, but a focus group of people that are going to work continuously on, on this initiative.
I don't think we knew about the focus group, but I guess that's what you were in.
Well, I, the, the think tank.
Right.
That's what I was...
Yeah, I, I assumed you would kind of use the committee to help you further the, the pieces of the plan.
Well, the, the teaching and learning pieces of the plan will be a function of the technology team, the K-12 technology team of teachers and administrators, who would be really identifying what needs to be, you know, what, how we can accomplish our goals and what we want to accomplish in the classroom. So, when we talk about it, it feels like nuts and bolts, but it's the reality. How do we name that keyboarding? How do we, what is it going to look like? Who's going to teach it? When is it going to be taught? What does the research show on how often you actually have to keyboard to become proficient at it, which we could probably all know? That's a very complicated goal. You know, so I, I think that the example I gave of right in voting that back in, in September of this team of people from the art, math, and science departments coming together to start to build our understanding and knowledge of what are the levels of certification that we actually need to be thinking about and understanding? What teachers do we have and what certifications do they have? Who do we have in house? David shared the example of Tiana Cassidy. She had that tech ed cert. We didn't have to go out. There aren't a lot of tech ed teachers out there. So, even if we identify as a need, you can't find technology education teachers. I'm actually going to call New York State tomorrow and find out, what do you do when you can't, when you don't have the personnel? Because I can't believe where the old school district that doesn't have, that may not be able to find enough personnel. So, I think there are a lot of pieces that are going into it. I would be remiss if I didn't say a lot of the conversations and the questions you've asked over the course of this year in terms of technology, what are we doing, the, the presentation, pulling that together. So, it's not like, I, I feel like we're not directionless at all. I actually think we're pretty clear on our direction now. What we think really is the most important part is to, Nathan, to get this down on paper and really say, "So, here are these benchmarks, here are the expectations, how are we getting there? Here's our goal. This is where we see, we see the growth for sequencing. How are we going to get there? What are going to be the implications?" So, I think that we have a lot of pieces that have been developed over the course of this year that now will get put into this plan. So, I, I, I agree, Chris. Like, I, I think we're...
I think we're absolutely on the right track. And we spent a lot of time identifying the framework to map out what we're going to do. But we're looking at something that was so large and something that had been really not attended to in, in so many years that it took a lot of time to be able to define and name all that we're doing. That wasn't just a matter of sitting down and say, "Hey, let's just put together..." We had to sit down and inventory where technology's being taught, what we're teaching, to get an understanding of where we are. And so, maybe in a, in a very rudimentary sense, that's the first level of assessing where we are, is just getting that inventory of what's happening, what are we doing, what is having impacts on kids, where are we hitting standards, where are we not hitting standards? And then, based upon that, we kind of create this framework that's going to guide what our work is going to be. And certainly, it's, there's going to be plans with measurable objectives, X being done by a certain date, the thinking of why we're doing these certain things. There's no question, it's going to be a, a very structured process that I, that I think the, the board and community would be pleased with. It's going to certainly involve challenges, whether it's identifying how we're going to provide faculty, whether we're looking at infrastructure changes down the road that may be different than some of our thoughts now. But ultimately, we're going to be in the process of naming what we need to do, and we'll have a, a plan to get there. And I would say certainly, budget process, we're going to be in a good position to be able to demonstrate and communicate what that is and why.
One more, more of an operational question. Can you just explain, when I was looking through something, it looks like there's tech leaders in teachers?
I didn't, I wasn't sure what you were referring...
Oh, because in one of these charts, they had under, it had teacher listed like by grade, and then it said TL underneath there. And I was like, what does that mean? Tech leader? Teacher leader? So, we don't have, there's not a grade...
No.
Okay. Okay. So, it must have been something, I was just like, I, I just thought that, that, I made some sense...
Oh, it's right here.
Right here.
Yeah, what is TL?
You have Corinne Daniels, TL, Deborah...
She was the team leader.
Team leader.
Team leader for the grade?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not a tech thing, it's just a general, got it, got it. Okay, thank you.
Grade level chairs, team leaders. I'm not even sure what we call them.
No, I just didn't, I didn't know. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, okay. Any other questions on technology or...
We could let Jesse go home.
Raina wants to know.
There you pass this day.
Elaine's going to it.
Okay.
I do want to say publicly that that cube that I was obsessed with, the student put together the very next day, and Jesse took a picture and sent it to me.
Oh, really?
Yes, and it was the two pieces...
It was a grade level or two?
It was a, I was convinced it wasn't.
What were you obsessed with?
The cube that they showed us.
Right, 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 right. Oh, that's funny.
So, it's solvable.
It's solvable, I just couldn't do it.
Just needed the Irvington High School education to do it properly.
Okay, so we're zooming through this agenda.
Yeah, well, where are we?
As opposed to last time I chaired the board meeting. And I guess we're up to superintendent's report.
Jeez.
And so, the meeting begins.
Yeah, wow, nine o'clock. Just simply, I, I wanted to, you know, as we, from the retirement and tenure reception prior to the meeting, and then to really transition, transition to my, my remarks today, we certainly have had, I think, what has been an outstanding school year, where I think there's been a lot of work that's been done. And I want to extend my gratitude to all the faculty for their dedication, creativity throughout this school year, and, and really perseverance through what has been a difficult time with a lot of expectations being placed upon them, not only the, as Phil referred to before, is the dreaded Common Core learning standards, but the, the way that we're pushing and driving them to change practice, to raise the bar in instruction, document curriculum and so forth. Certainly extend my gratitude to the administrative team and Elaine for all their work, and of course, the board and our parent community, broader community, and then the PTSA and the Ed Foundation. It's been a great year, and we just look forward to building upon this success next year. A lot of great things will happen in the next two weeks, graduations and award ceremonies and the like, so the year is not over.
Can I add one thing to that?
Please do.
Kind of along those lines. I wanted to do this publicly, kind of not so public right now, but I also wanted to acknowledge Elaine for everything she's done, I think, from the board. We really, really could not do this without you. So, I just wanted to thank you, you have support.
No, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't have an audience.
I feel, and Robyn, I think it's great that you did that, and I certainly thank the board for acknowledging Elaine's efforts. You know, I think earlier I got to speak to all the hard work and expertise that Beth brings to the table. A couple of weeks ago, I did have the pleasure of doing the same for, for Raina. But Elaine is, I have to tell you, when I'm working late, she will say, "Is there something you want me to do? Is there, you want me to stay?" Whenever there's an event, if she's not here, she's texting me, "Do you need anything?" And then to look at everything with the, the budget vote this year and a bunch of curveballs with elevators being broken, voting machines not operating, and again, I used the word persevere before, Elaine has been a trooper and really led us through a lot of challenges and does so with grace and a smile all the time.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we even need seven more comments from the community?
Elaine, you need to give Elaine time to get that in the minutes.
Consent agenda.
Right. Okay, so we'll go to comments of the community and anything not on the, of anything on the agenda, but nobody's...
You're not the community.
So, curriculum and instruction, is that, that's not part of the consent agenda, is it? Yes.
Well, your next motion is...
Okay.
Nope.
So, for the consent agenda, I guess we're looking at H, all of H, all of nine, with the exception of the ones that we did. So, we're looking at 9.1...
Six, don't forget six.
The policies.
Is six part of the consent agenda?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped over that page. I skipped a page, I'm sorry. Okay. So, we're looking at 6.1 to 6.5.
Which are the policies.
Right, and we're looking at 8, 9.1, and 9.6, 9.7, and 9.8.
And then all of 10.
And all of 10. I mean, I have a few comments on one or two of these, but nothing that needs to be pulled out for a vote. Does anyone have anything else? Okay. On, I guess, two questions, two comments, really. On 6.1 in the policy for internet safety, there's a line in the policy that talks about that the superintendent will set up procedures for, I'm policy, it's like in the third paragraph, the superintendent...
Will set up what?
The superintendent or is designee.
Child development and implement procedures.
Yeah, procedures that provide for the safe and security of students. I guess, my question is, is that going to be like a physical document or is that just because it is a physical document?
It's in the next round of policies.
Oh, perfect, okay, good.
Acceptable, we, we, our old, some of our own, like, accept, old acceptable use policies are so outdated that they're, that we've totally revised them, and that these types of things are integrated right into that.
Okay. Okay. And then my, my other question was, it's broad, but on 9.7, when we went through all the summer curriculum work, of which there's a lot, I'll just pull out, you know, I had a couple of questions about things I wanted more information on, which I could just email you after. I guess one question I would ask publicly is, what is Bridges? You talk about how the high school, I guess, their special, teachers are going to work on Bridges? I don't know what Bridges is.
Sorry.
Bridges is the WISE program, so that's the new high school program that we're putting in place to develop those schools work, our internship opportunities for our students.
Okay. Okay. And then you talked about also the Common Core learning standard algebra, and I guess my question on that is, I, I, I think we already have results from the test, and I just wanted to find out, you know, how we felt our kids did on the new Common Core algebra test?
Well, they have not scaled the test. We have not come back scales for it yet. We seem to be, and this is very, very loose, we did look at the raw scores, certainly some of our colleagues have sent some samples. I would say from the people who sent some information, they had some lower scores certainly than we did. We seem to be pretty nicely set in the middle in terms of our low and our high. We have, you know, like, I would say similar high to some, what some, saw some of the other school districts, and not low, the same lows as I've seen a couple of districts share. But I, I really am cautious to say that because I have not, we have not seen a lot of...
Didn't see anything, right.
You know, a lot of people say it was okay.
But it was hard? I mean, so generally, it was harder than the regular regions was in terms of how the teachers felt after seeing the exam?
Yeah, you know, I sat with the math teachers for a little bit to talk about their, just their perceptions of the Common Core assessment. I think similar to some of the other Common Core assessments, they felt there were some questions that were not really written well or seemed a little unfair or not aligned with what they felt they taught. I would say they were consistent with what was predicted in that they asked kids to show their work in a little bit of a different way. So, I think the teachers saw that even though they, they said it was going to be that way, until a teacher actually sees a test for a first time, it's very hard to predict what a test is going to look like. So, I, I think that they, for the most part, felt that it was, it mirrored what they were doing, but as you can see from the request to do work, I also think that they see where they need to refine the curriculum and the practice.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Anything else?
Do you want to acknowledge the donations? Sometimes we do that publicly.
I'm going to do that after.
Okay.
I just want to accept it and then...
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, do I have a motion to accept all the ones I said before?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for zero. Additionally, it's harder with paper. I just also wanted to specifically thank a few people who had donated to the district. Specifically, there were a few donations to the Ali Speechly Scholarship Fund from Method Fitness, Scott and Pam Mosenthal, and a fundraiser that Melissa Cirillo, Cirilio conducted, so thank you to those people, much appreciated. Also, thank you to Robyn Camp, who donated filing cabinets to the district, and Kathy Hansen, who donated violin to the district. And I think that's, that's it on this agenda, so thank you, we, we do appreciate it very much. Okay, I think at this point, we're now ready to, for your presentation.
Can we recess for like two minutes?
Sure. Yeah, we'll take a short recess. Yep. Sure. That's quick. We went from being behind.
Yes.
Fifteen, I'm in.
It was fifteen minutes, so...
Yeah. We stepped on the gas.
Fifteen minutes, wasn't there?[1688.66] It's hard to get out of practice, like you do it-- Zooming. And Dr. Harrison is going to go through his presentation on district goals.
Sometimes--
Fifteen minutes?
I have a tendency to feel a little long-winded and I think, in my thinking for this initial discussion--
Twenty-five pages?
Thank you. You know, I, I, I don't want to go back to things about process, think about framing things, how we started off at the beginning of the year. So I, I will be quick in my discussion, but really, this, the idea of this conversation is, is really for us to not sit here and begin to make decisions and think about everything that we want to take next year, but really to begin to, to dip in your palate, to think about the conversations that are going forward and to be able to start to think about before this year ends, while it's still fresh in our minds, and to start that process, think about goals for next year. And in doing so, you think about the framework for the work that we do in our schools. And I just throw up our mission statement as a quick example, to think about what we believe and what we want, to think about having a challenging and supportive learning environment where students attain their highest potential. And that we're preparing them for great academic success and lifelong learning, giving them specific skills. We speak to critical thinking and, you know, encourage discovery and development of student strengths, certainly something that we all believe. And when we think about how we deliver a mission, it comes through a variety of things. When we think about a mission, we think about a belief system. And I've talked a little bit about theories of action along the way. We started the year with a conversation with, about them, but we think about what wraps around that belief system, around that mission. And we think about all the experiences our kids have. We think about the academic programs. We think about the homeschool partnership and, of course, all those extracurricular and co-curricular programs that enrich student learning experiences. So when we think about the practical side of this, certainly we know that we're striving to prepare the very best experiences to prepare our children. And in doing so, there's certain elements that have to be present in looking at a, a culture that's going to promote that type of learning environment, that we're making sure that we have teachers that are well-prepared and dedicated, just like the votes we celebrated today. Having well-defined and well-articulated curricula, making sure that we have partnerships that are certainly rich, that are going to help us in programs that we talked about, and, of course, goals that are going to drive the work that we need to lead in our schools. And when we look at goals, goals become a complex structure. And I think this is even a little more complex than the graphic that I displayed when we started this conversation at the beginning of the school year. But when we think about the core, we come back to that mission and what that means to us. And we've got all these different pieces that fit into that. I talked about the theories of action, which is really how we bring a mission together to life in the schools for educators, to take that paragraph, a block of run-on sentences, and to try to make it real for us, unpack what that means for us to deliver education in that manner in our schools. We have a commitment, and hopefully, we're going to get through this next year, and looking at us, putting together a strategic, but a long-range plan. We have district goals, building goals. The board takes on objectives, and, of course, when we, individual goals, my work, that of all my colleagues in the district, and how we support and move the district's initiatives. When we think about where we are today, we definitely have a very strong focus in all things that speak directly to that mission, things that are represented in the district goals this year and are reflective, of course, in the theories of action. And we're committed to curriculum instructional improvement. And that's reflected in everything that we do. And to get there, there's things that we need to do. Of course, we have the, the equipment support, our teachers, to make sure they have the skills and tools necessary. We spent an hour and a half tonight talking about technology and its role in education. Twenty-first century dispositions, those are those certain skills that are valuable for our children, not only to be successful in school, but in the competitive world beyond our school. And, of course, looking at the types of experiences we provide them. We're making great progress on, on this front, on each of these fronts. We are working diligently to address the curriculum destruction. We're striving to increase technology in our classrooms, but to do so in a meaningful and organized manner. But pushing everybody to think at higher levels and think about the teaching, have students begin to think a little differently about their learning. So in doing so, and this will, I just want to touch on theories of action, which as a reminder, they're very broad belief statements that really function as guiding principles to help us bring our, our mission to life in the classroom and to give more meaning and context to the goals and the work that we're doing. This can have, breaks down as meeting in building levels and certainly in individual department systems, things a little differently from level to level, class to class. So in quick review, when we look at our theories of action, the first theory was really focusing on the types of learning experiences we want our children to have, focusing on the type of learning experiences and skills and knowledge that we believe students should have. And in doing so, we're looking at things that are directly tied to the goals that we've been working, working on this year. And we want to have rigorous, authentic learning experiences, having a comprehensive curriculum that's aligned, that has defined learning outcomes, that has a real, defined approach to assessment, and, of course, those other dispositions and skills that we think are valuable for kids to possess. In doing so, we move on to theory of action number two. And when we think about theory of action number two, we really talking about the learning community and not just focused on our staff, we're looking at our entire community. So we're looking and making sure that our staff is well-equipped, that they're engaged, meaningful, professional development that's supporting their efforts in the classroom, but partnering with our broader community, engaging parents, informing parents, giving them tools to be able to help support their children and their learning at home. The third theory really speaks to instruction and it talks about how we're monitoring teacher progress, how we're using our observation and evaluation process as a learning tool and a tool that really is going to improve instruction and benefit children. So we're looking at things that we're, we're going to look at, not only going well beyond things such as the A P R, but looking at the coaching opportunities, the instructional walkthroughs that all of our staff participate in, and using those as tools to be able to move into construction. So as we move through, certainly through this school year, these are all items that have come to life. You see certain actions in every classroom that I think are tied to that, every single professional development experience. And it's all linked. Not one thing stands alone. So when we, since we can say that we've talked about theories of action, which are guiding principles related to our thinking in the district about how we carry out that mission. But when we think about the district goals that we've been focused on, the district goals are all an extension of the same type of work. So to a quick review, or looking at what our district goals were for the 13, 14th school year, there was a goal that focused on establishing high expectations and accountability for teachers tied to instruction. We had a series of curriculum goals, curriculum goals that spoke to looking at Common Core and adapting our curricula accordingly, looking for opportunities for improvement in C and I side of things. Technology, as we've discussed throughout the evening, looking at college preparedness admissions, and looking for opportunities to improve that entire experience and its connections with the overall guidance program, and improving curriculum communications across the district. We have a facilities goal, a facilities goal that had two primary objectives, one to address the space utilization study, and another to come up with a plan to address fields and facilities needs. I think both of those are areas that we have spent a great deal of time on. Unfortunately, we didn't make progress on the final goal, but I think it's a commitment that I certainly hold and I believe the board does move forward. So when we think about where we're headed, when we think about the, the work that's been for us and where we're going, I just wanted to share a little reflection. We've been seeking a lot of feedback from our faculty, our leaders throughout the school year. And in doing so, we administered anonymous surveys, asking just for some general feedback on particular things, and asking a question about the theories of action and how that has been impactful in their thinking, impactful in their classroom. Teachers have shared some thoughts and, you know, certain things that stand out about teachers identifying clarity now in their thinking, being able to name particular things that they're looking for in classrooms in ways they haven't before. Teachers are recognizing that they're becoming more reflective on their own practice. Teachers are beginning to get with the 21st century skills, being able to be more aware of what they're asking students to do and be able to identify and name things in classrooms. When we're looking at teachers and their work in the classrooms, the teachers are finding opportunities to give students more independence than before. And teachers, of course, are saying that through this work, they've been able to kind of frame their thinking and that they were able to communicate more clearly expectations that they're establishing for themselves and for their students. The next two slides will really kind of focus on the curriculum and instruction piece. And this is embedded through all the work that we've done throughout this year. It's looking at so many of the areas identified in the curriculum instruction-related goals. As the board knows, we've been working to begin to document all of our curriculum ways that we happen to have in the past. In doing so, we've undergone a curriculum mapping initiative. And in doing so, this has been a huge undertaking. Not only is it a time commitment, but there's been a lot of change in how people think and a lot of focus and a part in great work being led by Dr. Core, but a lot of professional development along the way. And you can see that there's been some impacts here. It's helped really teachers begin to frame and sequence their focus differently. We're looking at how teachers are beginning to structure their courses and beginning to think about their focus on particular themes and how they're organizing their instruction. We're looking at how teachers are engaging the time spent on each unit, so the pacing, teachers are being more reflective on how much time they spend on particular content. And teachers are also beginning to identify that theories will be more reflective in their, in their craft and being able to look back at what they've done in the past and learn from those experiences. On the instructional side, and associated with curriculum mapping, but a bigger picture, there's been a focus on instructional design using the U B D framework whereby teachers are really being forced to think differently about their teaching. Teachers are beginning to work diligently to identify what students are expected to understand. We're looking at teachers that are more focused in their instruction, teachers feeling that they're being pushed more in their planning, thinking about what their objectives are for their children. But also, teachers are seeing that they're able to hold their students accountable in different ways. Where this shares some positive feedback, one thing that certainly we have to step back and think is that this is an overwhelming process where teachers, and I could probably add in a couple of comments here on the flip side, teachers recognize that they need more time, that there's a shift for them in the thinking. So not only are they looking at their curriculum in different ways, but now they're beginning to write units in different ways and document it using tools that are new to them. So teachers certainly are asking for more time, in time that we're looking to identify for them, whether it's some summer work and use of other time that's available, such as superintendent's conference days.
Chris, can you just remind us again what, understanding by design is? It's a frame--
So understanding by design is a framework of thinking about how you're going to plan your unit, a unit of study. And the whole premise behind understanding by design is designing with the end in mind. So before teachers start to create an activity, like, oh, I think tomorrow I'm going to read this book to the kids, or use this read aloud to, to teach kids about adding details to writing, it really starts by us naming what are the standards we're teaching for, what are the big ideas, what are those essential questions enduring understandings? In other words, what are the ideas that go beyond my unit? That not only do I want kids to take with them when I get to the next unit, but I want them to take that when they get to next year, when the next teacher starts to talk about this, I want them to have some thinking around that. So we call those essential questions, and enduring understandings. Then you say what the content is. So what's the actual content knowledge? And what are the skills that I need to demonstrate the content? And what's the thinking that goes with it? And then, once you think, then you design your assessment. Because then you're saying, oh, I'm clear. This is what I want kids to know and be able to do, and this is how I'm going to know if they know. And so the understanding by design is a framework so that every time the teachers plan a unit, it has these key components that lead us to ensuring that students know what we've set out to teach them.
And maybe to provide further clarity, we've actually already started talking about suggestions that we'll have for some of our workshops and presentations next year. And U B D was one of the three or four things at the top of our list, along with necessarily conversations around the tri-stateful language report and the Bridges and WISE program.
It's fair to say that U B D is designed to improve instruction, it's not curriculum.
Exactly.
Right. Which is why it says instructional design. Right.
Very good question. So, and then on some, some of the feedback that we've been getting generally about technology and one survey that we administered to staff--
Just one more question.
Yeah.
Sorry. Have there been studies done that show that understanding by design actually has a demonstrated improvement in the sort of outcome?
Yeah, I mean, it's actually steeped in teaching for understanding, which was at a Harvard and is at a Harvard. So understanding by design was crafted by these two authors, Brad Wiggins and Jay McTague. And they found a way to package this way of thinking in a way that could make sense for teachers. But I often reference, and I've often been at professional learning at Harvard on this, which is really teaching for understanding. And the whole premise is, how do we ensure that we're not just teaching at a surface level? That we are going deep enough that students can take the knowledge, skill, and deeper understanding to inform their next level of learning. And very often, we teach the content, we deliver the content, right? And then we assess the kids. But we don't always assess for understanding. And so the whole idea behind it is really teaching for understanding. So we go back and forth whether we want to even use the terminology, understanding by design. But sometimes you need to name something so that you have a common way to talk about it in the district. And so we have been able, over time, to really engage the teachers. And so when we say U B D, everybody knows we're talking about your unit planning design.
Good, thank you.
I would say there's certainly a history of positive U B D use across the district. There's departments that have worked using this approach in the past and certain principals that have worked with their teachers in doing so. But now it's the, the goal, really to try to have folks move in a common direction. So we're speaking in similar language--
Our first workshop was in 2003, actually, the opening service, in-service course on teaching for understanding. And so it was in common.
And then we also were seeking some feedback very generally about technology. And again, anonymous survey, we're on a liquor scale, seeking feedback from staff, open-ended questions. And in doing so, we had two, three, four teachers indicating that they felt comfortable integrating technologies into their classrooms. That 50%, 7% in itself reported, of course, and reported that they are integrating more technology into their instruction over the course of this year. And 90% would like to seek that opportunity to do, provide more integration in the future. There was some comment about some of the pocket use of Google Apps for education, where teachers are seeing opportunities there for collaboration, whether it's among students or professionally. Teachers have also provided some feedback that they feel would be more helpful to have additional computers in classrooms, easier access to iPads, and then Wi-Fi, which is also a request. Continued professional development is another need that is out there, is something that we're certainly committed to. But realistically, similar themes to other things is time and focus really needs to be provided for teachers to continue in progress. So as we're saying, I think we've begun to take some really good steps, we've shown progress across the board in all of these areas. But we acknowledge that our work is just beginning. And I think this is where we begin to think about moving forward and thinking about those goals from this school year. And, you know, certainly did we meet our objectives in areas, and we made a lot of progress, and there's work that needs to continue without question. We begin to wonder, how do we carry those goals forward? Do they still speak to us? You know, for us now, do we think about the types of experiences that we want our children to have as a bigger picture discussion? I don't know if it's something that we're prepared to have just yet, but we know that we need to have structured goals that will lead to motivate the work, just as the goals from 13, 14 did this year. So some points that ponder, and these are kind of a condensed version of some of the questions that I used to frame our conversation last year, that I certainly don't want to read them to you, but thinking about college and career readiness, where are we, where do we need to go? Continue enhancement of our programs and curricula to make sure that we hit needs challenging, making sure that our students have the skills that we're looking for, looking at technology and the role that it plays in our education. Also taking a look at the partnerships, whether it's parents, whether it's community members, and, of course, communication is vertically tied into that. And then coming down to conversations that we've had about budget and thinking about those long-range plans and thinking about what we need to do to identify greater efficiencies, recognizing that there's challenges that are going to be in place, thinking about the additional layers of legislation that we are forced to have to deal with in the future, where would school districts have to start to identify efficiencies? So what steps do we need to take to make progress in that area? So here we are, building upon our success, and these are kind of the frameworks, things that I think we have to think about, that we must continue to expand upon our focus and direction. But we, as you said, we can, I think, Rob, and with your records of technology work, we don't want to put too much out there without being confident that we can do it in a structured way, that we can be successful and measure that type of success. And we need to make sure we have the opportunity and resources to support all of our employees. We need to do so in a culture where there's support and trust. And then we need to make sure that we're-- And then we need to make sure that we're aligning the efforts of the board, the work that happens in this room, with what is happening out in the field, so to speak. So with that said, I indicated that this was that conversation, that to get your creative juices flowing, to begin to reflect on the work that we've done and the direction we need to go, recognizing we're heading into summer and there'll be challenges there, that we're going to identify the dates for these discussions to continue. We're not going to let this slip away from us. We are going to, immediately in September, we should be looking at developing and finalizing the DUBB goals for the district, for the board, and of course, for me. And then we need to maintain that commitment to long-range planning and create a structure for what that looks like, and creating a model for what the calendar looks like for the next school year. I'm already trying to build the dates that will be aside from Board of Education meetings and these types of conversations, to make sure that we can keep the business going around the board table and not overwhelm the discussions that we need to have. So with that said, certainly, Mrs. Kern, the floor is yours and the board to have a conversation about next steps and thinking of maybe some reflections on the year.
Okay. Onto the board, I mean, who wants to start? I don't even know where to start with this.
Well, I love the idea of adding some extra meetings because we've definitely had some kind of late-night meetings and not maybe give certain things the attention it needs because we're trying to get through everything. So bigger picture, some of those goals, strategic planning, I think those are great meetings to have set aside, I guess similar to the fields and, you know, buildings and grounds meetings that we had that were separate from the regular board meetings. I think that's a great idea because that's, I think, the only way we're going to get stuff done.
Yep. I'm in favor of using additional meetings to cover off some of the long-range planning objectives that we have been postponing. I'm also in favor of using a more streamlined approach that Robin has suggested several times informally as a, in a way of kind of getting to a single page or maybe two pages worth of summarizing the district vision and sort of long-term goals. It's not, certainly not what I originally envisioned, but the idea of engaging a consultant and that whole approach, that's more than we're able to kind of chew on. And I think that practically speaking, we just have to make the time to kind of address the long-term goals. And I think practically also, we, when we've talked about our district goals, we've tended to actually think almost long-term, and that's kind of evident in the fact that some of our district goals this year can be rolled over to next year because, in fact, they're longer term than one year. I would posit the idea of removing the facilities goal for next year. I, from my own perspective, I feel having, looking at these goals that, and I'm not, this is just a straw man idea, that we don't need to have the facilities goal in there. I realize that from a practical standpoint, you will be spending an awful lot of time, if the bond were to pass in the fall, you'll be spending a lot of time working on facilities-related projects, but from a district goal standpoint, when I look at this, I say, well, we actually achieved the goal in the sense that we reviewed these things and we made proposals, and it's now before the community to consider. So I would be very comfortable focusing our entire efforts on curriculum instruction goals with the idea that the long-range goal is a part of that. And that just sort of simplifies the goals, and I'm always in favor of simplifying. When I look at the curriculum goals, it seems to me that there are a number of them that can be rolled over and some that probably need to be, that need to be modified, particularly around the first one, continuing to adapt existing curriculum, Common Core learning standards. I think we, and this is, you know, an interesting discussion point, that we really do need to try to craft this goal to define what those higher standards are, that we need to define this goal and what those higher standards are, because we're more, we're more aware and more knowledgeable about what the Common Core learning standards are. And then, so really, we need to be thinking about what does it mean to define higher standards, which I know John was a big proponent of last year, but I think especially next
You mean the issue of like, I guess the facilities falls under that too? Like, a goal should be a reach versus the, there's definitely expectations for the day-to-day job, but they might not all be included in the goals. It doesn't mean like we're not interested in the facilities, it just means that it's not going to be our reach this year.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, and so it's possible that, for example, this is where, you know, at one point, I remember we were talking about the superintendent goals being very similar to the district goals, like why wouldn't be this, why wouldn't they be the same? But Chris might have a goal that is specifically related to implementing the Fields project if it were to pass, and that would be a superintendent goal, whereas our district goal might not have that anymore because from a board and district standpoint, we kind of did the work we were supposed to do.
Right, right.
I just, I think that it makes sense to try to simplify and narrow, and I know Bob said it sort of somewhat offhandedly, that we should just have a single goal curriculum. I'm in favor of a little more detail than that, but I think if we can find a way to streamline our goals so that they're more focused on exactly what we want to accomplish, that would be ideal. So that was kind of a stream of consciousness, but we had to get started someplace.
No, I mean, I, just to comment off that is I, you know, some of that, most of that I agree with, but I guess I do see our goals as, you know, kind of the guiding force behind everything, like, there's a comment in here about how, what is that? It says that, you know, goals must expand upon the current focus and direction, and I actually think the goals should define the focus and direction, not expand upon it. I think each year we take a step back and we figure out what should the focus and direction be, my perspective.
And I think if I may, an objective, that comment was just trying to communicate ambition, not continuing to progress, continuing to move forward.
Yeah, yeah, but, and, I mean, the thing that comes up a lot, I find, year after year, is this whole issue of mission and priorities. And I'll actually use as the example, current hot button in the community, which is the French situation, and, you know, obviously, people are concerned, and I think a lot of that, even to figure out where we're going to go with that, comes down to priorities. And again, as you said before, you know, you have to figure out, there's only nine periods in a day, and there's only so many choices, and I think so often when we have these discussions during the year, we come back to, well, we don't have priorities really laid out. And if technology is the top priority, then it might be helpful to kind of figure out, maybe, maybe not every priority, but maybe a few top priorities, so that when we do get into these judgment calls, it's not a discussion each time, but, you know, okay, we talked about that, this is more important, like, you know, for this year at least, this is the priority. So I think we, I would like to suggest considering prioritizing a little bit more, which I think might in turn make things easier when we come to budgeting and issues that come up during the year, so.
And what I think becomes interesting to that point is when you think the bigger picture, strategic planning, long-range goals, and where does that interplay come? And then with the prioritization, does the prioritization then become driven by the strategic plan, and then the goals carry out aspects of that plan?
Yeah, mine.
And I think the strategic, all of this comes down in part to what do we want? What do we want the education? What do we think are the priorities for the educational experience? I mean, what should the language instruction look, you know, what languages should we be offering? What kind of commitment are we making to offering the right set of classes for that? And how sensitive should we be to enrollment? What's, what should we do in technology? What should we do in sciences and engineering and what have you, all across the board, and figuring out what, what is that, what kind of picture are we aiming for? I guess I'm talking about high school, but then we work backwards, and there are fewer choices as we work down to the lower grades, but they're also there. There was a lot in your presentation before you got to goals, and, you know, I have a few comments about that. It's all related, I guess, but one of the things I think that we have, we, there's a lot about process, and I've made this comment before, I guess, but in various contexts, but there's a lot about process and a lot about inputs into how you, how the district is doing things, how the schools are doing things. But I'm not feeling like I have a very clear grasp on how do we figure out if we're doing, and I've said this a hundred, not a hundred, but I do keep, how do we know if we're doing it right? How do we know if we're doing, how do we evaluate the outcomes of what we're doing to really, and I think a lot of thought probably has to go into how to do that, to know that we're, we're doing a good job, we're doing a good job for the range of students in the range of grades. And I feel like I want to see more about how to, how, how you think about doing that. I don't, from what I've seen over the, my one year of service on the board, I don't think, I think there's more work to be done on that. I don't claim to have the answers on how to do it, but I feel like we should do more of it, because I think it's really important. You can, you can have all these theories of action and understanding, all the process-type things down, and you can put that in place carefully, but we don't really know what we're getting from that, you know? And how do we, the process may or may not work, but we really have to have a judge of whether it's working overall, and that, I think, is outcome-dependent. And outcomes are hard to measure, I know, and it may not always be quantitative, but I think it's important.
You mean a measurement of whether or not the students are grasping?
Well, yeah, I'm talking about, I mean, the test scores are one small part of that. On the instruction side, we have APPRs as another small part of it, which is somewhat outcome, somewhat, although I think our APR process is also, a lot of that is judging the process and the inputs, and so, and only part of it is judging the outputs at this stage.
Where kids go.
And where kids go to college, whether they're prepared once they get there, whether they're good citizens and happy individuals, all matters, right? Those are all outcomes, and, you know, lots of, there are lots of different process ways of getting to good outcomes, I guess. And ultimately, I think, I care, I imagine most people in the community, I'm sure the vast majority of the community care, care very little about the process and a lot about the outcomes.
Just as a practical suggestion off of what John is saying, would it make sense for us to actually have, to dedicate part of a meeting in early September, you know, as soon as we get back, to talk about exactly that subject, and that you would take the time over the summer, your wonderful, to kind of frame it for us so we could actually go through and talk about the different ways that we might define success and, because, you know, John has.
Or that could be folded up, folded into the long-term planning process.
I was going to say, to me, and it almost sounds like John is, John is going with a UBD approach here, that understanding by design. That I think we need to define what that measure is, what the objective is, by defining what success looks like. And then in doing so, we have to work backwards and ask ourselves those questions of, well, what does it look like? What are those experience, you know, building, you know, building ladders to success, but what are those steps on that climb?
Where does that ladder go?
Happiness.
I'd say that's, to me, that's a bigger picture discussion than you have.
Happiness, yeah.
And then you back down from that, well, how do you evaluate that? And what are those measures of success, and what does that look like to us? So I think that's the conversation about how we look to plan what the combination of the goals and the strategic planning and how they really dovetail one.
I think it would also be interesting to know how other school districts have done that, I mean, because some school districts might just punt and say it's all about the scores, because that's the only thing that we have that's tangible. And then maybe some other school districts dig deeper to try to do post-graduate surveys to understand where people are going in life. I don't know, just, that would even be helpful because, to me, this is not a question that's a new question, it's a question that has been bedeviling educators, you know, for decades, and there are books written about it, and so I just think it'd be interesting to know how other districts are handling it.
It's just time. I mean, I guess I was kind of hoping we could find time over the summer to do this.
Yeah, that was.
Even if there's not all five of us there, I mean, I'm, if I'm not available, I think as long as it's moving forward.
That's fine with me, too.
I just worry that if we wait till September to start having these discussions, there's no way, nobody's going to get to it during the year. I feel like we'd lose the whole year. I think if we could actually make some inroads during the summer, and again, I think as long as people share, if, you know, three or four people are there to move it forward, then they'll fill the other ones in, and I think we might be able to at least move it forward a little bit over the summer.
I think that's, yeah, I was going to say that. I didn't like the thought that we're going to wait, you know, we work a 12-month year, sort of.
Well, I wouldn't say that we don't.
No, you guys do, we know you guys do, but.
No, meaning we don't, so we should.
The board can, I think.
Right.
You know, we didn't, last, last summer, we met early July, and I don't think we had a.
And then August.
A regular meeting till toward the end of August, and I felt like we were one or two meetings short.
I mean, we don't, I mean, I think generally, that probably stems from generally, board meetings in the summer are pretty light, but I think to Maria's point, you know, we could do a special meeting dedicated to this. We don't have to, you know, we could set it up more like a forum if we want and work it that way, so it could be a work session as opposed to like a formal board meeting. And I think.
Yeah, yeah.
So in other words, we're willing to do more over the summer.
And the only thing that I throw out is caution, and as Elaine will attest to, that we actually, I think we've added another meeting in August already, and knowing that is a challenge because I know when I'm looking at the window, trying to think when it could accommodate business, and trying to look at everybody's schedules, I already know that, you know, the discussion went, the time when Raina can't be here, sure there's a vacation bug. So it is going to be that's an angle, and there is going to be times when some other people may not be here.
And I think that's.
But we have to have a conversation of what it looks like and the types of things that we want to accomplish, because not only will we have some folks missing from around the table that need to participate in ultimate, big-picture conversations, but we look out to our audience, and I think we want to have some community participation, and we see what's already happened at this point in June, let alone July and August. So I think we have to be thoughtful around that, and I.
Which is, which is fine, but I mean, I think we've already been through two years now of talking about planning and just running out of time, as we all know. I mean, the bond vote, let's face it, the bond vote is beginning of October, so the end of September till the bond vote is pretty much, I don't think we're going to get much done, in fact, early September, on this, because we're probably going to be focused as a community on, you know, a vote takes a lot of time and energy to get a vote up and running in the middle of the year. And then I'm just worried, and then there's vacations, and then it's just practicalities, and then the budget's already here. Budget's here before you know it, so I just, that's my concern. I mean, yeah, ideally, in a perfect world, it is easier during the year when everyone's kind of focused, but I just, the calendars go so fast.
That's true.
Yeah.
So then let's try to put together an idea that we can work something out, try to map some thinking out for how we could make better use of summertime.
Anyone else?
I think we've touched on a lot of the issues between us.
Does anybody else have an opinion about the facilities goal, that idea that we might not have one for next year? Sort of made sense to you, but.
I think, I think it makes sense. Again, I think goals should be the things that are, you know, a little bit of a higher level focused. I think it's always important, but it's an ongoing day-to-day importance.
So, I mean, I think in light of that, it makes sense, what you say makes sense.
You can always change your mind, just saying.
Yeah, no, I think that's right. I don't know that, it gives me a little discomfort to saying we're just going to, well, we didn't achieve these goals, we're just going to roll them over and keep going, but we really want to, you know, if we didn't achieve a goal or make a lot of progress, I think we ought to have a, you know, a hard look at why we didn't do that.
Right.
I think a part of it, that's who you look at the nature of the goals, I don't think there's, some of them are things that are always attainable, the setting objectives to make progress, and I think there's going to be continued growth in areas. So I think there's, you know, the mob.
So I think there's the modification around some of these objectives that I think is key.
I think I just, I guess when I sit here, I don't know, maybe I have a bit of any look at it. I guess because the reality of your, you know, one of your goals in schools is not that practical. In other words, we can sit here, but it doesn't just happen. I know you all know that. So we can sit and talk about something, but when I look at these things, very few of those in this, on this particular slide, I'm fully focused on urgent and strategic, very few of these would be something that I would ever imagine that we could actually accomplish in one year. So I would love for us to have a way that where we can get the progress on it, because first, if it starts with professional development, then what, you know, from the time that we set out to do something to the steps it takes to get there and then for it to translate, I don't know many schools that accomplish a goal in a year. And so.
And I know you're not really seeing.
Well, yeah, I guess I'm not saying that because I think we wrote, we phrased these in a way, so we're not talking, identify essential areas of curriculum and instructional need and develop plans. We weren't saying implement the plans and improve them. We were saying identify, or next we were saying assess. You know, we were, we were talking for not trivial things, but smaller things, I think.
Yeah. And I do agree with that, John. I guess I just felt like, I, you know, just want us to, you know, as you're thinking about it, it's really important that we are here and that we're targeted so that we can feel that we're accomplishing goals. I mean, I think everybody likes to set forth and feel like they've gotten to where they want to get.
And we did talk about, originally, I think we'd originally talked, and you were big on this, getting the goals done in June, I think, so we can.
Right.
And we're, you know, we went from, we're obviously not doing that, but June to September, you know, it'd be nice if we can get a little ways toward that before September, just so we're not too far. So we, so the administration really does have.
So then they're finalized in December, and we're halfway almost to the year.
Yeah, so we really have the whole year.
Right.
It's really out of the goals for the, what are we up to, 2014, 15 year, not the second half, not just the second half of the year, which we know is going to be really hard.
Right. Okay. I guess the, we will be still executive session?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the board will be adjourning into executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment history of particular persons. Motion to adjourn, before we say that, I just want to say one thing, which is, as it's the last board meeting, and probably, I probably won't record the end of the next meeting, our first reorg meeting, our reorg meeting will be July 1st. I guess time is.
Eight AM.
TB, it is 8:00 AM, 8:00 AM in here, in the CPR. And I also just wanted to thank the community, the parents, the kids, the students, as well as all the employees of the district for, you know, it was a good year, 13, 14 school year officially over in about a week. So thank you to everybody. And our motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks.